Audio check. Audio check.
Can you guys hear me?
Audio check.
I hear you with an echo, Michael. You can't hear me?
Check, check.
I hear you.
Hi, everyone. Sorry about that. I'm off cam for just a couple of minutes.
I hear Alejandro too. Can you hear us, Michael?
One more check for in the room. Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees as we convene in the new year. Happy 2022. I hope it has not been terrible for you so far. We'll stay modest in our hopes. We are joined remotely tonight by trustees David Duque and Alejandro Montoya, and we have one, two, three, four trustees in the room, which I believe is a quorum. So I will pull up some slides and we can get started. This session is being recorded right now. We have two members of the public and/or school community with us tonight. We welcome you both.
Michael, I hear you, but I can't hear that.
Give me one second. David, can you hear us?
Again, I hear you. I can't hear anyone.
I can hear, I can hear you, Michael.
Yeah, I only hear awful noises from the rest of the room. I'm sorry.
Just one more minute, everybody. Okay, we are back. Fewer screens than before, but just as ready to get started. And so if you have any difficulty hearing at any time, I'm going to ask everyone in the room to speak up, and please use the chat or raise your hand, and we'll make sure that no one misses any of what is spoken. And with that being said, I think, would you like to call us to order? David can't quite hear, so let's speak up.
Good evening. How's that, David?
Better. Am I doing something wrong?
No.
No, we've had a technical challenge in the room here, David, so.
Volume here. If I get feedback, just let me know, okay?
Okay.
So far, you're good. Okay, so we called the meeting to order at 6:10, and we are going to jump in. We're going to start with an approval of the January agenda, and happy new year to everyone, families, staff, board. Could I get a motion for tonight's meeting?
Still moved.
David moves. Charles seconds. All in favor. And motion passes. Great. And now the December meeting minutes that Michael sent out for us to review. Can I get a motion to approve the December meeting minutes? Maho motions. We have a second. All in favor. Aye, aye, aye. We made it through that. All right, we are going to hand it over to Michael for new business.
Thank you. And Joanna, would you mind coming over here for this portion? All right, well, we are meeting tonight in a pretty unusual time. We are pleased to be back and open. It's obviously been, even by COVID pandemic standards, a pretty extraordinary couple of weeks for our school community as we deal with the Omicron variant. And I'm going to ask our principal Joanna here to not only chime in as principal, but also help me with some Spanish as we talk about the COVID items in particular. We won't be able to do the whole meeting this way tonight, but I do think that it's worthwhile for this very important topic. So we know that the Omicron variant has been different. It's been faster spreading. It has been not as severe in most cases and on average for people who are impacted. Thankfully, it has still been relatively less dangerous for children compared to older people. And there's some impacts there. Do you mind if I just go through? Yeah. So for us, this has meant, first of all, shifts in the rules that we have to follow, the local and state rules. It's, and we'll talk a little bit about some of the steps that we've been taking in the school, and I'm sure there may be some questions about those tonight. The impact on us has been negative in the sense that it's a very challenging way to run a school, both for teachers and for our operations team. Our student attendance has been down, as you saw in some of the slides, and I'll show a chart tonight. We've taken about a 10% hit on average based on mostly students who have to be under quarantine. We've also had staff absences, some staff positive cases, some staff hung up on travel or dealing with family members or just who happened to be ill for other reasons at a bad time. So the good news is that we've been able to keep our school safely open. We've been able to keep our classrooms staffed, and Joanna and the instructional team have been able to keep students who are quarantined learning in some way through Zoom for parts of the day with homework being sent home. At the end of the day, we know that going fully remote as a school would be not a way to ensure that our case rates would be any lower, and it would be a way to ensure that students don't benefit from our teaching, from our social work, from our meals, from our after-school, from all the caring adults that they're around. So I'm proud that we've remained open. We've tried to manage our way through tough circumstance with Joanna's leadership, with Matthew's leadership. But that's kind of the overview of where we are. I think as compared to other schools around the city, we're doing okay. We'd love to get those attendance numbers all the way back up, but I'm really proud of our staff and the way they've rallied.
Okay, so buenas noches a todos. Quiero comenzar con decir que este es un tiempo difícil para nosotros reunirnos. Pero Michael estaba explicando que aunque nosotros tenemos este variante de Omicron, nosotros hemos podido mantener la escuela abierta. Hemos podido darle los servicios a nuestros estudiantes que ellos se merecen, no solamente académicamente, pero también los servicios de terapia, poder tener niños de servicio de comida. Y sabemos que este variante se, la propagación es más rápida. Pero sabemos que este variante también no es tan peligroso como otros variantes. Y también todavía vemos que aunque niños tienen, han tenido el variante, todavía están los números bajos para los niños. Sí, es difícil, ¿verdad? Tenemos maestros, profesores que se han enfermado, estudiantes que se han enfermado, pero hemos todavía trabajado fuerte como equipo para cumplir, conservir a nuestros niños y nuestra comunidad. La asistencia ha sido bastante baja, pero nosotros tenemos fe que el variante ya se desaparezca ya para que nosotros tengamos todos nuestros estudiantes en la escuela aprendiendo. Sí, yeah, that's what it.
So to get into a few specifics. We have continued our weekly random testing. The number of families who have opted in has increased by a lot, which is very helpful. We are quarantining students who test positive. We are still under a 10-day guidance for students as of now. The state has adopted a five-day rule, but we await the city, who is our authoritative agency, to sort of digest the state guidance. So I anticipate that we will see a shift to five days, but it's not official until it's official. Just kind of one of the strange things about the Russian nesting dolls of health bureaucracies that that we are able to work with. We have been following the local guidance in terms of sending home COVID test kits if there is a positive case in a classroom, communicating with families, encouraging them to use those kits and communicate back with us. As I mentioned, when students are quarantined, they're participating through a combination of Zoom and take-home work. The Zoom is because we're not in a position to have a dedicated, remote teacher. They're zooming into their regular classroom, just not for the entire class day, but for core subjects. We've been provided with stronger masks that are available to staff who prefer them. And just in general, have seen our staff and our families really show a lot of flexibility and resilience as they cover for one another as plans change, but as we do, you know, our best to keep the school open.
Bueno, nosotros estamos, Michael ahora explicó unas cuantas maneras que nosotros estamos respondiendo a los casos de COVID y manteniendo a todo el mundo seguro y saludable lo mejor que nosotros podamos. Nosotros en estos momentos continuamos a hacer los exámenes de COVID para niños los nueves. Y yo quiero darle gracias a los familiares, a la familia porque más familias se están sintiendo cómodas con no solamente tener el niño, coger la vacuna aquí, pero también que coma los exámenes. Eso es importante. Nosotros estamos, la familia ha recibido información al aspecto de que si tu niño está positivo, que se mantenga en la casa diez días. También me alegro y me da mucha alegría que los padres han cooperado cuando los niños están positivos en la casa, los niños están en la computadora con sus amigos y amigas aprendiendo por Zoom. Para el equipo, los profesores, si ellos están positivos, ellos se quedan en la casa cinco días. Ahora mismo estamos siendo bien flexibles, no solamente la familia, pero también el equipo ayudándonos uno al otro. Eso no es fijo todavía. Hay algunos profesores que cogen más de cinco días para ello mejorarse. Nosotros somos bien flexibles en ese aspecto. También estamos mandando los exámenes a las casas, a la familia, y no solamente mandando los exámenes para COVID, pero también mandándolos en español e inglés para apoyar a los familiares. También la máscara. Tenemos la N95, que es una opción para los profesores también, para que ellos se sientan cómodos. Y otra vez voy a decir que la flexibilidad y la fortaleza que el equipo, los miembros de Leap Familia dándose el apoyo uno al otro ha sido estupendo.
Looking at our attendance week over week, you can see we like to be up here in the mid 90s or the low 90s at worst. These last couple of weeks, we were in the high 70s, or this last week we hit 80%. So that's tough to see. If you read the tabloids, you would think that all the schools were at 20% attendance. We are not there. Our families have been making every effort to come in, but we want to get this back up as soon as possible.
Aquí vemos la asistencia de cómo ha bajado. Yo estaba bien preocupada. Michael no dijo esto, pero lo estoy diciendo yo. Yo estaba bien preocupada de la asistencia, pero si nosotros nos comparamos a otras escuelas en el estado, están a 20%, 30%, y otra vez quiero darle gracias porque la familia están confiando en nosotros, que los niños están bien saludables y están trayendo sus niños a la escuela. Con eso quiero decir que como quiera, queremos subir el 100% de asistencia.
If there's a hopeful data point to share tonight, it's this. This is data as of January 16th. And if you guys look up there, I guess we can see it now here in the room. I am not a geometry major, but I think that that is a curve that's starting to bend in the right direction. So as we look at the seven-day average of tests that come out positive and in total daily cases per 100,000 people, it started to bend down. That's the same type of shape that we've seen in other cities hit with this variant around the world. So we are hopeful that we're past the worst of this, knock on wood, and so on and so forth, but we can be hopeful based on that trend that we'll be able to keep moving forward.
Basado lo que vemos aquí, podemos ver que el 100% de casos positivos está bajando. Nosotros tenemos mucha fe y esperanza que sigamos viendo este mismo, tú sabes, que los 100% están bajando.
I'm sort of courtesy of the city online newspaper, which keeps a nice graphic dashboard. Like to, actually, before we go to academics, anyone have questions about COVID or safety or any of what we just covered? Melody.
So we have a variety, like if the student is sick, then we don't expect the students to sign on. We send work home, but of course, if they don't come in, then excuse.
Questions here in the room or among our panelists? I do see a parent question, which we might as well take right now. Alma Woods asks, how will the mayor's recent decision for a remote option now impact LEAP? Will families be able to opt in? So as I understand it, the DOE is essentially adopting a different answer to that same question. They're saying that you'll be considered present if you are home but participating online in some way, shape, or form. The answer to your question is it won't immediately or directly impact us. We set our own policies in this regard. Theoretically, you know, there could be families who say, well, I'm going to leave LEAP Academy because I prefer that. But I don't think that would be a wise decision. I think it's best to stay with us, stay with your child's current teacher, and we'll muddle through. Certainly, if this turns out to be a very extended period of time, I imagine we would look again at how those get categorized. But for the time being, our focus is on, you know, keeping kids learning and not losing our momentum.
En estos momentos, si nosotros vemos que los números continúan a subir, nosotros quizá podamos tener esta opción. En estos momentos, nosotros nos sentimos que eso es lo mejor para nuestros estudiantes. Nosotros queremos mantener los niños en la escuela. So en estos momentos, no vamos a dar esa opción. Y sí, puede haber el caso que va a haber familia que dice, pues yo voy a sacar mi niño de LEAP porque no tenemos esa opción. Pero nosotros aconsejamos que mantenga tu niño aquí con su profesora, y después con el tiempo, tú sabes, lo que pase con el barbie es lo que va a decidir. Así es que nosotros vamos a tomar las decisiones qué es mejor para nuestro estudiante.
And you know, I would just finally remind everybody. The circumstances keep changing, and you know, we can all make our own judgment calls, but particularly for adults in your family, or if you have anyone vulnerable in your family, it's a great idea to really take a strong look at getting that vaccine. It won't necessarily keep you from getting COVID or even from passing it on, but we would love to have you not be in the hospital, and we would love to have you stay as safe as you can. They're free, they're widely available, and even if you hadn't made that decision in the past, there's still time to do so. Last call for questions on COVID in the in the room. If not, I think we'll turn to academics. So if you came in today, I'm just going to introduce the person where I will hand it over. You came in today on the fourth floor, and you walked around it all. You saw some new decorations on a new theme. We are starting our first preparation period for New York State assessments at LEAP Academy, focused on English language arts and math. We're reviewing concepts. I'm sorry, there's a word missing here. We're practicing our test-taking skills to really show off what we know, the stamina, understanding how the test works. It's something that's new to everybody who's a student. And throughout it all, keeping a positive climate. This is not a drill-and-kill environment. This is a place where we love knowledge, we love showing it off, and that's the spirit in which we're getting after this. But Principal Anduhar, why don't you?
Yeah, I would add to that, that keeping that positive climate and that this is not, you know, drilling skills, right? And the framing today for our kids was we are showing what we already learned and what we know. And we're practicing skills to get better, and we're using strategy to show what we know. So it was definitely an exciting day one. Teachers were prepared, kids were excited. Students expressed what they felt about, you know, just our whole thing of knowledge is our superpower. This is our opportunity to practice skills to take a test that I'm going to demonstrate what I know. So I have to say that there has been a lot of investment in that positive climate. Throughout test prep is the first year. We don't want teachers feeling anxious, so they're feeling really good and motivated. So, you know, it was day one. There was a lot of planning, and we met this afternoon with teachers, debriefed. What went well, what are we going to do better tomorrow? And we're just, you know, taking one day at a time, but I'm very excited about all the planning that came, that we did for test prep and how day one went. So continuing review and reset of academic systems. There is so much work happening around unpacking standards. You know, along with our VP, Graciela, without her, I can't do this work. But Graciela and I have worked really closely at looking at the curriculum and developing our leaders, supporting our leaders to then support teachers. We have a PV tomorrow where teachers are going to unpack standards. And that's going to be a great PD. Curriculum materials, we're supplementing, we're modifying sequence of lessons. We're looking at assessments. Do assessments align to the lessons and the unit? And student services. This is a big deal. Like, we were able to start. Like we were able to start identifying the best groups of students based on data to provide the services that they need. So we started our new RTI groups last week. We started our RTV group. So we started our Chico program where students were super excited to meet their, their mentor teacher and be able to earn happy faces for every block that I meet expectations and that I'm learning. So we have those student services not only academically but also behaviorally happening simultaneously. And is very targeted because we were strategic on making sure that we had the right groups of kids getting those services. But that being said, we're also doing shelter classrooms. Students that are exceeding and are doing well are also being pushed to, you know, to greater heights, right? If you're above grade level, then let's continue pushing you and not, not leave you where you are.
Yeah, so we so yeah, a real big shout out from me to the team for that work. You all heard it described as we were just getting into it last month and now you're hearing that it's happening in the building and then next month we'll talk about the results it's producing, right? And the month after that. The, on the staffing front, I noted in our pre-reads, we, we did have two teachers from the team have to leave us over the break. One, both voluntarily, one reduced her commute, took another offer. It was a tough decision, but you know, we understand. And the other had a family circumstance back on the West Coast and so she had to be there for, for a family member. So you know, we, we always hate it when that happens. It's not uncommon this time of year. So we're actively interviewing for teachers to shore up that. I, I will say, you know, because our staffing plan has some give in it, even with those and even with other kind of COVID-related absences, we're still fully covered in our classrooms. And we also made the decision to bring in another dean of instruction, somebody who's a very veteran mentor, teacher and teacher coach a little bit earlier than we would have expected. But Reba Feliciano is going to be a terrific addition to our team.
Um, yeah, definitely. I wanted to add also that for test prep, because of those two resignations, we definitely have a candidate that I was speaking to prior to our meeting, so I'm really hopeful. So she's coming in this week for an interview, but we have two of our deans that are also teaching during test prep. So it's really hands-on deck, like leaders are not only supporting teachers, but they're also teaching. So I wanted to highlight that and also just add that I'm really excited about Reba joining us. We do, we do need another dean to support on the heavy lift that's happening right now. And also to leverage Diana, which is one of our currencies of instruction so that we could leverage her knowledge around Ls and dual language. We don't, we want to make sure that we are supporting teachers, giving them feedback around language objectives and that they're supporting our Ls in the classroom during their instruction.
I just saw Bob, our finance consultant. Hi Bob.
Apologies for joining late.
No, that's okay. I know you have about 10 or 12 board meetings tonight. Can you, do you need us to jump over to you in just a minute or are you?
No, you can take the next 15 or 20 and I should be all set.
Okay, thank you. So pivoting back then to academics, any questions or comments about, about that piece?
What block is that happening in? What block of the day? One hour in the morning and then we have IXL happening where there's also targeted teaching. But right now it's an hour on Wednesdays is two hours and 15 minutes. So after that hour, they have IXL, which is focused on individual on targeted skills. And then the afternoon is our regular freaking, like they're getting math at the, in the afternoon, they're getting ELA, they're getting SLA in the morning. So they're still getting, like we still have our pacing happening for our core content. And then we have that test prep block. So it's not like all, no, it's a hour every day except Wednesday, we do two hours in the 15 minutes. Just at their greatest.
So I was, and I'm glad to hear, obviously we talked about the summon, the education accountability need, but I was thinking about what you said about Diana supporting with dual language because I was thinking this could be a shift, I'm imagining the test prep in English, but not losing, like with the supporting the dual language further.
I don't mean special activities, but we have discussed different possibilities to celebrate Spanish and celebrate language, you know, at that time of the year as well.
Debbie, Debbie Romero and Katrina. So Debbie's, she was, she joined us this year, Katrina, you, she was, you know, her.
Okay. Well, thank you. We look forward to sharing more updates as we go forward. I did share some, you know, additional content in the pre-reads that the board members received. If that raises any questions, you want to talk about anything, let us know. And yeah, we'll continue. So I think our committee reports are up next and that would start with finance. So Bob, we didn't even keep you 10 more minutes. And David, we didn't keep you 10 more minutes.
Thank you, Michael. I appreciate it. David, do you want to editorialize anything before I dive into the financials?
I guess I'll save my comments for later. Go ahead, Bob.
All right, Michael, can you just enable screen sharing just so I can pull them up? Go ahead. Thank you. So the finance committee met last evening. No real material changes, I think, to our forecast. We, we did run through the ratios. The one that is technically out of compliance, obviously, is our debt-to-asset ratio. Again, strictly because of the capital lease that we are obligated to now carry since our last audit. Absent of that capital lease, we are well within our debt-to-asset ratio threshold. On enrollment, December is kind of one of those in-between months where we don't submit enrollment to the DOE. So our enrollment numbers have remained static from la, the last time we met. The graphs again just kind of articulate the movement month over month that we've seen. So we did manage to pick up some kids, six students as of our most recent per pupil billing. And that obviously results in a small uptick in our revenue. Moving on to the P and L, we've realized $4.28 million in revenue against a forecasted amount of 8.8 million. So that has resulted in kind of a year, year forecasted shortfall of about $272,000 that we anticipated. However, this number is offset by about $77,000 projected in personnel savings just due to vacancies that we continue to carry and unfilled positions. So Michael and I will be meeting this month to look at our forecasted other than personnel expenses. So you'll see some change in this column right here next month. Our year-to-date surplus is $129,000 and we are softly projecting an annual operating surplus of about $429,000. On the balance sheet, we ended the month of December with a little bit more than $1.1 million in the bank against almost $300,000 in accounts receivable. That number should drop pretty significantly by about $100,000 as we have some pending grant claims with the Department of Education now that have been mailed in. You'll see a pretty sizable decrease in our accounts payable balance of $133,000, yielding some positive equity movement. And then on the cash flow, again, there weren't a lot of material changes to this, but we do expect a positive cash surplus of about $135,000 on the year. So very much in line with how we've been trending over the, pretty much the entire fiscal year. And the next round of per pupil billing opened today and is due at the end of the month. So the next time you see financials will include the most up-to-date build enrollment on both the gen ed and sped side for the school. So we'll be able to circulate that next month.
Bob, I just want to clarify on the balance sheet, it looked like to me like it said November 30th. I just want to clarify that we actually are looking at December.
That is a non-update on my end. Apologies, David. These are as of December.
Okay, and so then you scrolled by it a little quickly since I didn't get it last. The 133 was all I'm looking for. Okay, great. So then I think the real uptake here is that there's not much change from last month. There have obviously been some extended vacancies that per pupil remains hovering around where we expected. And again, but for accounting changes I'm not happy with, we, we are out of compliance on our debt-to-asset ratio. But for that, we are in compliance. So you know, generally on, on the right prospect here. I'd still, as I think we've raised, like to see most of the OTPS change because I think there's probably 10% of your non-rent spending, 20% of your non-rent spending that is allocated in miscellaneous right now. So I, I think we'd all like to know where that is. But otherwise, very nice work in tightening it up over the one month and bringing that forecast back up.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Well, thank you guys. You did the work. I just.
I believe our chair had to step out for just a moment. Is there any other member of the executive committee who'd like to share whether there are any updates? I don't happen to know whether there are or not.
I, I, I think we've only spoken brokenly this week and we need to talk in executive session about some, some matters that are not yet ripe for general discussion. So I, you know, there's probably not much to, to report from the executive board if Emily comes back and tells me I'm crazy.
I think, I think Charles was agreeing with you.
Yes, yeah, we had some conversations with, I think we're going to have an executive session today to talk about some of them.
And Maho as well, okay. And then if, if you guys don't mind, I'll just keep us moving. Academic and Accountability Committee. So we had a chance to meet this. We had a chance to meet this past week and discuss many of the same updates that we just shared. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, it's pretty much just what we just here.
Okay.
The balancing zoom and.
Right. So Maho was just saying it's about the same as we had covered before. The test prep, the balancing zoom and sickness and how we move forward. Thank you. The next agenda item is the board norms and development. I don't think we have any updates here. Couple of folks. Well, no, we do have a big update here.
Everybody has been approved. We have huge.
That's right. Three, three brand new board members. What could be bigger than that? So.
Congratulations, fellas.
Yeah. So we will have to circle back with Mr. Estrada, but for Melody and Alejandro who are here tonight, thank you again for your service. And yeah, I think this being the new year, we will probably resume conversations about our new committee, potential new board members and so forth. Emily, we were just talking about board norms and development. Congratulating the three new board members. I don't know if you have any other items you wanted to touch on there? Yeah, but we can circle back if you want to add anything. We've essentially said that we had covered it in our update, but.
I just add that it's, it's great to see this approach for the first testing year, first like full testing year data. And that, like two things that I've been thinking about since we met, which is one that the first testing year with the founding class can be a challenging year at, in some ways. And will, you know, I know the kids are working really hard. It's great to hear from you all how the teachers are working really hard. And we will have to see how our kids are, are able to navigate this new test and how our school is because it's a challenge the first year. So I'm hopeful about that, but I think it's important for everyone to like keep that in mind that the first year of testing can be an adjustment of that state exam testing. And then another thing that I was thinking about that we can talk more about in the future, but I just want to put on the table is would love to circle back to some conversations we've had before, but around when children are learning two languages and what that progress over time looks like. And this idea of like fifth grade, sixth grade being where kids really hit their stride in acquiring two languages and being strong in them. And so we talked a little bit about step data for kids in Spanish, step data for kids in English. And I think it'd be good to both bring that back to the norm, to the board conversation and potentially also with families. I know I'm raising a kid who were aiming for 2.5 languages. Good luck. But you know, it was a big conversation for us of like what their development will look like at earlier ages versus their development in their early teens. The headline being right, that they'll be much stronger in their early teens. So I just thought that that would be worthwhile to bring back.
March and then April. The two subjects are separated. ELA. Yeah. So a little. Science starts in fourth grade, yeah. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, our, our next agenda item is public comments and so as is our custom, I will just go down in the order that people appear on my screen. So first of all, Ms. Woods, thank you for your question earlier. Would you like to make a comment now?
Happy New Year. No comment.
Happy New Year. Feliz año. Lauren Farber Weintraub, would you care to make a comment tonight?
I actually don't have any comments, but thank you for all you're doing.
Don't sound so surprised being here tonight. We have someone on, I think they're probably on a loner laptop. Sir or madam, would you like to talk? Okay. Oh, you know what? That's probably that laptop right there. And I guess that laptop is very happy with the state of the school. Okay. Well, thank you for being here and for your comments and anyone who's watching this later. Thanks for joining us. I think that we will want to proceed to executive session. I will need a couple of minutes to send a link to our remote members for that, but I think this, as is our custom, right, this, well, we would do a motion now to go into executive session. And then everyone on the line should just know the board doesn't plan to. And then everyone on the line should just know the board doesn't plan to carry on any other business afterwards, except to adjourn the meeting. So.
I move to adjourn to executive session.
And that is for the purpose of.
Discussing real estate and generally real estate matters.
Great. Okay. Members of the public, thanks for being with us tonight. And board members on the line, I will send you a link in just a couple of minutes, but you can get off of this link. Thank you. Okay. Daniela, thanks for being here tonight. Thanks, John.
Okay, we're back live.
Are we on video?
Yes. So.
Great.
For a motion.
All right, we are back. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make your motion to adjourn.
Maho, motions. Fellati seconds, all in favor.
All right.
Seven fifty five.
Seven fifty five. Thank you.